Hi, everyone. It is now six oh four P M. And I'd like to call the special planning commission meeting of Tuesday, January twenty third, twenty twenty four to order. Commissioner De Vries, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Right. And clerk, can I please get a roll call?
Here.
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 Here. All right. Moving on to public comments. Public comments are generally limited to items on the special, on the special meeting agenda, press, agenda pursuant to California Government Code, section five, four, nine, five, four, dot, three. If you wish to make a public comment on any, on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the item to, to be called. The planning commission will not be engaging. And if you have anything that requires follow, follow up staff will get back to you. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per speaker, and the chair may further limit that time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. If you wish to make a comment, please fill out a speaker card. If you are attending via Zoom, join the Zoom webinar and use the raised hand. Or if joining by phone, press a star nine on your telephone keypad icon. Oh, we're not doing it. Okay. I'm sorry. We're going to be moving over to our discussion staff. Do we have a report?
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. We're returning tonight to discuss the, the project of four oh four, four oh eight in the Alameda. And back in December, the city assigned that project to Adriana Ortiz, who's on the line with us now as a project planner. And basically follow up on the design that was presented December thirteenth, and to confirm for the applicant's benefit that this is a design that is approved and, and appreciated by our, by our team moving forward. So they can go forward with designing the building plans and then bring those projects to fruition. So hopefully after this meeting, we'll be able to get on a faster track and help them get to the, help them get to the, to the goal line, get their building permits. So with that, I'll let Adriana introduce Adriana and have her present the project to us, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Welcome.
Hi, members of the commission. It's nice to meet you. Adriana Ortiz, planning director, worked for Four Leaf. Um, so I received this project last month, and we're bringing before you the, so the applicant is going to present with a a presentation. They've requested an additional planning commission meeting to discuss the proposed design. Fred Avila is here today to provide the commission with a presentation of the architectural features and colors of the project formerly known as the Alameda. The planning commission may provide feedback on the proposed project. However, no decisions or actions can be taken. If you have any questions, I'm here moving forward.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to come up and present or share any materials you might have brought with? And sorry, can I have you unmute the microphone, please?
Actually, no, it's like had its head. If, if, if you can't see these well enough via the screen, I do have full size sets here so that you can see especially the colors. Sometimes they get washed out. So if you have any issues with that, please let me know and we'll, we've got, I've got a set for each, 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 each member.
Surely you just pass them out of here. Yeah, we can take a moment to. Set those. Please.
So those should be easier, easier to read. I'm, I'm pretty much used to reading them this size, so I know what's there. I can, I don't have to. I almost don't have to look at them anymore. I can read them. They're printed in my mind.
All right. Okay. So I think we're settled here. So, um, staff, is there something to present for the public? Are we just?
No, we did not provide a PowerPoint as the applicant had asked for this time to present to you.
Got it. No worries. Thank you. I'm sorry. We're just getting settled here with, with the paperwork and stuff.
Yeah, you go ahead. Start the PowerPoint. Or, or the actual, it, it's just, it isn't a PowerPoint. It's individual slides.
Yeah. Perfect.
So as you can see on the site plan, we've, we've gone along and along Alameda and Highway one sixty, one, one fifty six, we've added some street lights out there. And those street lights are basically, if you look back on the next page on A one point one, they are the, they're down the second row. They're the premier municipal LED lights. So they're very similar to what you have down on Third Street. So that was one thing that we, in meeting with the, with the subcommittee. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, so printed A dot one dot ones.
Yes. Just look at the screen.
Okay, perfect.
Either the screen or your set of plans has them. If you want to see them bigger.
Okay.
So we've added two, two lights along the Alameda and two, three along the Highway one sixty, one fifty six, I'm sorry. And so those are, those will be, those are more decorative. They're not gonna, they're not gonna give off the light to actually light the parking lot. There's some additional parking lot lights in there. And they are the, they're the third ones over or, or the fourth. Both of those, e- either, the one on either side can be used. I gave them some options. They're both dark light or dark sky approved lights. So I kept that in mind and ma- making sure that we're complying with, with what we're doing on the site. There's also some building lights. We added two, they're kind of faux pumps. Those are. I didn't put it in. I've got two faux pumps that can be added. They're, they're in that parking strip between the, between the parking strip and the C store building. Union seventy six. Those, those didn't get in here. But we do have those. And then on the south end of the, next to the leaf space, that walkway out there, we've installed pavers. And I've come up with two different paving or paver styles. Those being, I'm sorry, one paper style. It's between the treks and the active. It's, it's on the top row, first, second one from the left. So that would be the paver style that'd be used in that area. And then.
Hey, yeah.
So the top row on our map box is.
The, the zoom toolbars on there. Are we able to just move that down or collapse it? There we go. Perfect. There. And then you're saying the papers are where?
The papers are the second picture in from the left.
Yeah, got it.
In that driveway. Kind of a neutral sandish color. Nothing too dark. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, yeah, it is from the right. I'm sorry. I'm looking at it backwards. So that's some of the stuff we've added to the, added to the site to, you know, to, to get this into meeting and, and, and looking as it belongs in the city of San Juan Batista. So that's site wise. If you go onto that next sheet, and, and if, then if you go back to the, there's nothing on the A two point O, but if you go to A three, which is the elevations, that's the third sheet back, fourth sheet back, I'm sorry. And Liz, if you can give me the fourth sheet. One more down. That came out ugly. Oh, there it is. Okay. The, the fourth sheet, which is A three point O. Now, in looking at what the original tracks, tracks barn look, look like out there, we changed on the east elevation, the backside. We changed that, those, that, that, that faux door, so it looks more of a, like what it, like the, like the doors that were on the original barn. And then we put a, we've got, we went back to just the straight vents at the top. No more. Yes, that was taken out.
So Fred, can I add?
Sure.
Through the chair, can I add a, a, a comment here? Vanda Giber and Kira Monk, who are here, were awesome enough to email to me. Really, and I meant to bring him to my, darn it, but I was in San Francisco, so I don't think I'm home. I can, I can bring them next time or get them to them every once to see these things, but they're old photographs that they dug up from somewhere of that show Mr. Tax himself, the sheep rancher, farmer, businessman, whatever, in front of his barn, his old sheep barn, the real thing, the real McCoy in this general area. And so when Fred says he changed these doors around to look like the actual tax, the door, the doors that were on the tax barn, that's where he's referring to, to those pictures. Is that right, Fred?
That's correct.
So it's pretty cool, the level of kind of detail and authenticity, you know, to replicate, or to give the, to give the sense of that this is tax corner. This is the, this is reminiscent or paying homage to the tax sheep barns.
And then the materials and colors, if you go back to that A one point one, the actual roof style is, uh, this is the same composition roofing that, that is on the current.
The windmill.
The windmill.
Right now. So the roofs will match.
Yeah, so the roofs, roofs will match. And then on, on the low, on, on those lower shed roofs, the, that, that's going to be a corrugated metal. And it's, it, you can actually get that pre, pre rusted or, or it's a rust type paint. So it looks, it looks like it's, it's old. It looks like it's been there for a while. Kind of like me, it's getting old. There, right above that, on, on the, on the sheet A one, you'll notice that there's, there's, I, I, I left an option of three different stains. There's a early American, a classic gray, and a honey colored stain. Those are, that's, that's, that's the actual trim stain. The, the actual wall is going to be the bare premiums, semi-transparent. So we're going to go with, so we'll have that as the actual wall color. And then we have actually four different stains at the top that can be used. That should match well with that. We've also added, just down below that, there's the storefront. And with, with the grids in them. And the doors typically now with, since COVID, we stay away from hand opening doors. So most of them are automatic sliders. Just for, just because of health reasons. So that, that, that being the storefront that we would use. On, on the light fixtures, and I, I made sure that these were also dark skylights. The one, the, the wall sconces, we have two different ones that I, that I'm using. At the openings and where you're leaving an exit somewhere, I'm using the, the gal twelve and a half inch bronze wall, bronze wall light. It's an actual barn light.
Excuse me, Fred, are you referring to an elevation again when you're up there?
I'm, I'm referring to the, the actual fixtures.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry.
And then there's also some that, that li- like the, the windmill that, that will face up against the sign, but there's an overhang there. So it'll block that light from shooting up too high. It'll basically, it'll point to the wall. So it's not going to affect the dark sky. And then the, and then we've gone with, under the canopy, we have to have a certain amount of light under the canopy required by state. But that's under canopy. It's all going down. And it's, and there again, I used a, a, it's four hundred, it's forty five hundred looms. It's, it's only a thirty, thirty five watt bulb. So it's not, because it's LED, you, you get the brightness, but you don't get the wattage pulling in.
Got it. And do you know if that's a warm light or is it like that bright LED, blue, white?
It, it, they're going to be, they have to be pretty bright under the canopy.
Got it.
Just can't, we just can't get away from that.
Okay.
And then on the, we've also redone the, the canopy monument elevations. That's going to be A three point two, Liz. One more, one, one more. Let's show that one for a second so we can kind of look at that. This is the south and the north end of the structure. And once again, we did those faux doors on the north end facing one fifty six. And that storefront system sits way back. That's at the, the south end of the building. On the south side, we have a, a little, because we have a seating area out there, we've gone in and put in, those are, those are active windows. They're not operable, but they are active on that end. On the north end, those, those that are on the, the barn itself, those are actually faux windows. Because they're, because that's where our, that is where our, well, one of them is, is a window. It's in the manager's office. The other is back in the storage room. So we avoided putting a window in there. The next sheet, please. Basically, I took and looked at what, what was done on, on the windmill as far as keeping that sign down to a minimum and not making it real big. Theirs is, is wider than it is high. So we have a, we have the, the monument sign on the canopy itself on the north and south elevation. And Harmon brought this up. He said, those posts look too skinny. It looks too, you know, they were just too tall. So what I did was basically I've got a steel tube in the center, and then I've got four bays wrapping it. So it gives us, it gives us some mass. It, yeah, it needed something. And that gives us, that gives us that wood look throughout. So we, we, we tried to maintain the wood look as much as possible. And then once again, on that roof, that'll be the, the corrugated metal.
That rusted now is going to be on the gas cavity thing?
Yeah. And then it, it, with the plans, if you guys look at them later on, on your, the, the materials list is, is keyed into these plans as well. Some of it will, will refer you back to the A one sheet, but we tried to get all the, I worked quite, the, the subcommittee who I would like to really thank and for all their assistance and, and, and their guidance in getting this, in getting to this point, have been a great help to me in, 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 in getting this, getting this project moving and continuing to keep it moving. There, it, it's, and, and, you know, we have a, I didn't mention it, but on the, on the front walkway on the building, that'll be a trex deck type application. And not knowing what would look best until we kind of get a better idea of it. I actually have two, I have a brown and a gray in there. So we have an option of either one. It'll all depend on, on the trim. If we go with a, a brown trim, we should probably stick with the more, the warm color trim. So any other questions?
I think we kind of need to know that. But we've asked for materials board samples and, and for us inspectors and our planners to, to manage this development. We need, we need details. We need the specifics.
Well, this, this project is going to be coming back, right? So we can.
Right. Per final approval.
We'll be saying this can be tied up at that point since no actions taken right now.
Correct, correct.
Um, I mean, for me, I, I, I was going to say, I, I'd have one concern. If we go back to, what is it? Eight, eight, eight thirty one or?
A three point one.
One, one, sorry. Just, and it's, it's minor. Those barn doors, I think I saw the same photo that was provided by either Wanda, Vonda or Cara. Someone sent us those, this historic pictures of tax corner. And I know we changed those barn doors to have that Z looking pattern, but I can't recall if it was two, two Z's or two Vs, I'm sorry, going down where it looks like, I don't know, it reminds me of something out of Chevron.
It was, it was actually split in half.
It was split in half? Yeah. So that was the only concern. And I, I just want to make sure that we'll check that photo. Yeah. So, and then also the lightness, the light thickness for matching the light posts on Third Street. Do we know if that is correct? I know we looked at some of the light posts and the sample or what we received from the historic society showed a certain light post, but they were thinner. And so we want to make sure it's the right thickness when it comes to the light post. So it matches what's going down on Third. So do we know if we were able to locate anything like that? Or is it just still that?
This one does have a thicker base. The one that I have it here. It, it, it's not the same manufacturer. We can go into, I, we can look more into, into those and, you know.
Got it. No worries. Yep. No, other than that, I mean, I don't think I have any other questions. Does any of the other commissioners have anything? Oh, yeah, you're right. You nailed it on the doors. My apologies.
No, no problem.
Yeah.
I, I, I had this sitting right next to me when I was drawing. So I would make sure I wouldn't.
Perfect. Yeah. Yeah. Any commissioners? Anyone? Questions, concerns, comments?
I, I just want to say again, I can't say this enough, that this design, this concept, tax corner, sheep barn look compared to, let's just call it version one.
Yes.
Man, is this great. What a, what a complete hundred and eighty degrees in the, in the right direction. And just again, thankful, I think I saw Harmon's name on the Zoom thing. I don't know if Dr. Doll is on as well, but thank you to the owners for your cooperation with the city to get the design in the kind of shape and, and thank you to you, Fred, all your hard work. This, this is going to be a product I think we can all be very proud of.
Yeah. I think for me, same thing. I just want to echo what, what Commissioner De Vries mentioned. You know, thank you for being so willing to work with us. You know, I, I know we've kind of gone back to the drawing table a couple of times, but the fact that you're willing to make this look amazing for generations to come. I, I know this project's gonna, it's just gonna, it's gonna fit right, right in line with what we have in town. And so I can't thank you enough for at least taking that time with us to do that. Any other comments?
Confused. On, on the elevations, the roof vents, as we know, I don't like those vents up there. But on one of the elevations, it shows three of the circular type vents, and then another it shows two vents with a copula in the middle. What's the final controlling design?
Uh, this one, the one, the one we have up in front of us has, has just the three of, the, just the vents only. We took the, we took the couple out.
Okay. And you added vents on the canopy cover?
Those weren't there? Yes, yes.
Well, just for the record, I don't like the vents. I don't think they're consistent with historical barns in San Juan Valley. But I'll echo the other comments. I really like the idea of using the corrugated metal because I think that goes quite well with our city here. And I, I like the look of the thing. I, I don't like the things, but this, the last time I looked, this is still a democracy. So I'll, I'll, I'll vote with the, the other commissioners on the design, I think. And I, I really like the effort put forward to make this consistent and be a real benefit to the city of San Juan, especially at the, at this controlling intersection. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, any other comments? Um and then, yeah, any other comments?
I I was just gonna add, um yeah, sorry, I can turn it back and make it red again. Uh in conversations with Fred Avila. We talked about the um, the we'll call signage. And I don't know if you want to put the elevation that shows the front of the C star up, whatever sheet that is.
I say three, I say one before that one. Uh one after, there you go.
And and for those, I I maybe you could clarify. For the other commissioners, because I asked you this question and I think and Jose, uh but. But the the what looks to be a rectangular sign that says tax corner is not going to be a regular ring rectangular side, but is instead going to be. Painted onto the side of of that barn gabled in.
Yeah, and it's.
Like like windmill is.
And it's hard for me to do that in CAD.
I know. A lot of people might see that and think, oh, there's gonna be a big rectangular sign. But no, you're, the 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 idea there is to have it painted onto the way, just like the windmill market did. And in fact, we talked about the fact that that's um the artist who painted that on windmill. Which is really attractive is some guy named Moss. Not Randy Moss, that's a football player, but some Moss Moss signs, I think he's still around. And there was, there might be a chance to get him to do something very similar in that space, so that rectangle. Um is meant to show the area where that painting is gonna go, but it's not gonna be a rectangular sign, is that right?
Yes, i- it it's more to give a a size to what we have to work with.
Except for the the canopy, the signs are gonna go up there as well, right? On the, on the, on the gas pump canopy?
Well, they'll they'll have uh like uh uh like um um. A seventy six logo on one of them.
But it won't be backlit from our understanding, right? We're gonna like, we're gonna. Light it up or figure out, it it won't be this big, bright orange um.
But is that rectangular, it's gonna be the the logo.
Yes.
Uh shape of the company um. And. Yeah, I like everything that that you put into the monument sign that you have in one of the drawings here. Uh that's going on the corner of one fifty six and the Alameda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's. That's what you're going with is that particular size, what's the dimensions of that?
It's eight feet from the grade to the top of the roof peak. And it is seven foot four inches wide.
Do you have a drawing that's considered?
A three point two. Two sheets down.
So there's gonna be two of them?
No, just one.
Okay.
Ones, ones, one, one's the end of it, one's the. The front of it.
Yeah, yeah, it it's only on this one drawing?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, that's gonna be on the corner and you're saying it's approximately eight feet high?
Yes.
And it's about seven feet wide?
Yes.
And and it's um. Uh it's straight up and down, it's not curved or anything?
No.
Uh I I I would just like to see it a little bit bigger, a little bit wider. Uh and maybe not so much with wording, but maybe just to, you know, to. To uh further enhance the uh character of the surrounding.
We can make it wider, but we're gonna have to get a sign, sign approval on a, I'm not. We'll, we'll, we'll have to discuss and see what our our actual total signs area can do. So. Is that not correct, Don?
Oh, yeah, the side permit is separate and just for my clarification, um above the the name. Those are gonna be the gasoline prices, right?
Yes, sir.
So you don't plan on uh your tenant, uh you don't know your tenant yet?
No.
But they're not gonna have a sign on the corner, only on the.
Probably, I'll probably just have it in front of their stores.
Okay.
It's about, I mean, because we're all, we're always limited on sign, you know.
Right.
Signage, so. We have to maintain that.
I I would just like to see him uh a little bit more uh in character with the buildings, you know, as far as. Wood structure, wood, wood texture or what have you.
It is, it is wood with with uh.
Yeah.
Maintain the wood.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Might want to put a spear on there, no, just kidding. And no, anyway, I I like to, I like where you went with this and it's great, it's it's just the. Denote the difference from where we went with the first uh drawings and what have you and designs, so thank you very much for going this route.
Thank you.
That's really good, thank you.
Any other comments from our commissioners? All right.
Chair, Chair, if I could just summarize uh where we might go from here.
Yes, please.
Um thank, thank you very much for this, uh Ms. Avila, um. We've recirculated the uh the permit conditions and there are plenty of them. And uh we have Doug Pike on the uh call tonight, our city engineer, and he is uh wants. Looking for additional conditions, especially in concerns to hydrology. And uh to make sure that that the the relationship between the Caltrans storm drain and this project are together. And that may have some minor changes to the the uh, the uh, the building grounds, um. So there may be some variation based on the engineering needs to make sure that things don't flood worse than they did last March tenth. Because from experience, we know this corner is vulnerable. Um and I don't know, Doug, if you want to speak to that at all, but I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what your role is in this project.
Sure, would this be the time for that?
Great, thanks.
Now, I'll just be very brief, I I did review all the conditions of approval. Relative to uh drainage issues. And stormwater and uh they were actually pretty thorough. So uh I had a couple of comments that I passed on to Don and sometimes the challenge is. Uh how different people interpret those conditions. And uh you know, the details are looked at during the building. Uh permits, the middle process. Where I would have the responsibility to take a look at the site grading and drainage. And see how they match up with those conditions of approval and. Um my comments to Don were, I just want to give you a heads up. How we're gonna interpret that during the building plan checks in the middle. Um the key thing that uh we saw was that there is some localized. Flooding and inundation on that parcel in the large storm we recently had. And so that uh you know, causes us all, I'll take a look and say, why is that? Well, there's a watershed that is to the south of this parcel that um. Is the cause of flooding when there's a. A large storm event over that watershed area, in my career, I've seen this many times where you you can go. Hundreds of years before you see a hundred year storm event that's focused right on a small location. The uh. What I've heard and it was just hearsay at this point was that that storm was about a fifty year event. Which actually in terms of volume, isn't that far afield from a hundred year event. But it did flood this parcel, so that just raises the issue uh. That during building plan check, uh we need to verify that the finished floor elevation. That's set for your building is not gonna go underwater in a hundred year storm and also um. Filler caps for the uh. The gasoline tanks, the gas tanks, vents for the gasoline tanks. Uh aren't underwater in a hundred year storm and from a localized uh event. So typically, the way that's dealt with is a hydrology hydraulic study and uh. The engineer would take a a look at that watershed, it's. What it's doing is is it's coming into the highway and causing a backwater and then that corner fills up. Until it can work its way toward the east and uh. Uh it'll continue flowing. So it's an academic exercise, but uh that's how the finished floor elevation will be set, there needs to be some validation that. That that's not the case, along with that, your gas station designer knows well that there's very specific. State codes in regards to proximity of fuel tanks to. Flood areas and so that they they would want to know that, they probably are not aware that that localized flooding is happening. It's, it's easily mitigated, sometimes just a six inch difference in elevation can solve all these issues. But yet it needs to be validated and it's uh, I'm not looking for a problem with to cause any more work, but. It it will protect everybody um if uh. The owner of the facility needed to file the insurance claim, for example, they go back to the engineering documents and say, here, this is. Finished floor elevation set, the competent elevation based on the hydrology hydraulic study. And that's all I wanted to say, I I think this is actually one of the uh. Probably most interesting looking service stations and the design and the architecture that that I've seen, very impressive. And uh I agree with everybody, this is a great. Project and I'm always available if your project engineer wants to. Give me a call or I'll give him a call just to talk about this and uh. There probably is a drainage study, uh I haven't had opportunity to see it. And I could look at that and if there's anything that needs to be enhanced, in order for us to set, set the final. Finished floor floor elevation, the elevation of those vents and filler caps. I'd be, you know, glad to help out with that. That's, that's really all the comments that I I came up with.
Thank you, Doug, appreciate that feedback and Adriana, if you want to just help describe the process. Um for example, if this comes forward as a public hearing on the sixth, we're gonna need to advertise that tomorrow and send out notices and so forth. So what do you foresee is our process and some of the deadlines we need to meet?
So as long as the applicant was able to provide the uh. Items that were listed in the notice of incomplete that was sent out, um I believe I sent it out on the twelfth. Um as long as they're able to provide those in ample time for staff to do a review. And to draft our staff report or ask for any additional information, um sometimes we ask for um clarifying information like. Based off of like what Doug was saying, um receive feedback and comments from all of the other divisions, including building and fire and. Um try to provide the planning commission with as much detailed information as possible, showing or demonstrating that the applicant. Is compliant and um that they met the requirements and uh. We prevent, we provide you with also the changes in the conditions of approval, so. Timeline wise, me if we're due tomorrow, I don't believe we received all of the items in the notice of incomplete that we sent out. Uh to the applicant, uh we'll have to double check. Um but then it would go to, um once we're able to do that, it goes to planning commission and then from there it would go to city council.
Do you need to go to council, Adriana, um also with appeal, right?
Yes, sorry, yes, you're absolutely right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Chair, and then I thought I saw Harmon with his hand up.
Is this, is this hand up?
It was up earlier during um Fred's presentation.
No, I just, uh hello, everyone. Uh Harmon here, uh I just had a few, uh just a basic comment at the, at that time when we were talking about the monument sign. That if we can have a small uh, you know, panel for a tenant in future. Because mostly whoever comes in has a tenant, they would want to have a advertisement or their name logo on the monument sign. Um doesn't have to be too big, you know, uh just whatever, you know. Uh I would say, my, I don't even know what the sizes are, uh so that's what my comment was.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, um I guess so, again, any last comments, uh a public comment, actually?
Ms. Vonk? Para Vonk, Saman Batista. I just want to thank the planning commission for redesigning this gas station. And I want to thank the architect and the owners, because it's really looking beautiful. Totally appropriate uh for our city, so thank you, thank you. I do have a couple of comments, sorry about that. Uh the monument sign, it's really hard to see, because it's really tiny on on the overhead. And it's really hard to tell, you know, exactly how it's split together. And so I I would love to see something a little more detailed. I was hoping it would have a really rustic look, maybe hanging or something, I don't know if you can do that with the. Prices, you know, that are all electronic, but looking rustic. Um and then um Mr. Buller also mentioned, there's got to be a little panel for the tenant. Um so monument sign, then what about the sound walls, has that been looked at at all? Do you know what's, what that's gonna look like? I don't know if landscape comes later, but that wasn't discussed. And then um. Also, you know, there were a lot of conditions of approval in the initial um. Project and then also there was an EIR and there were mitigation measures mentioned. That had to be implemented, so I'm hoping that doesn't get lost in the, you know, redesign and.
Especially, especially noise, as I recall.
Okay. Um then just. From past experience, having sat on a planning commission once, at the end, all this stuff shows up. Especially fire suppression pipes, all of these great big red pipes and stuff. Show up like right in front of the building or whatever, so. That's something to take in 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 consideration too. And because maybe the landscaping can deal with that if that's legal, but. Just from experience, you know, a lot of stuff shows up at the end. Anyway, I think that's all I've got, I really want to thank everybody for putting in all this time. And um and also for the owners to be so amenable to redoing this whole thing. On such short notice, thank you.
Thank you. Um any other public comment?
This is actually more for Doug, um we actually have uh uh MH Engineering Alan doing the grading and he will work uh directly with Doug. So I I think he, he has in the past as well, so they're, they're familiar with each other, so that should be a good. That should work out just fine, so.
Oh, that's great.
They will work together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comments in Zoom land or chambers?
No other speaker card received or hands raised via Zoom.
Hey, great, and then again, um I think I already asked, any comments, anything, no?
I was just gonna add something, uh Fred, you actually had Alan draw some, draw some um designs already for grading, didn't you?
It's, it's in.
But has it gotten to um the engineer, Doug?
No, this is just. Preliminary, because he did, he did the. Um Alan did the the engineering on the previous site. So he's very familiar with the, with the property itself, but uh and. Unless things have changed as far as setting those elevations, it it's it. Because the parking and everything stays basically, stays, stays the way it was.
Right.
So, but he is um, he is making modifications and is willing to make modifications.
It might make sense to get Doug the latest greatest from Alan, just so.
Well, I'll, what I'll do is I'll email Alan and have them talk direct, because.
There you go.
You know, with it being great, he let them be on the same page.
Any other comments?
Just one quick one, um I think we've mentioned in the past that the sign permit can come later and be looked at more closely and in more detail. Because we'll, we'll have a master sign planned for the whole site, not just some unit sign to consider.
Thank you. All right, anything else, anything else? All right, anything, anything else? All right, then, um, I guess, I think that takes care of, uh, discussions, um. Correct, no, there, we're not, there's no action. Um, and then, um, before we adjourn here, I need a direction from staff. Um, we were under the impression that we wanted to set up that, officially set up that subcommittee. Um, for design to help, um, move this project along, is that something we can do today?
Um, no, we, we can't take action, but just so the commission's comfortable with, with Dan and Jose acting as like a design committee.
Yeah.
Helping you guys screen this information.
Commission, but just not to act as a liaison. Between the city and Fred, basically.
Yeah.
It's been working out pretty great, because something comes up, you just text.
Yep, and we want to be transparent, so everyone knows that that's what's happening, so.
Okay, that's all.
All right, um, okay, well, then, um, other than that, then I will, um. The next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, it is six fifty-four PM and this meeting is adjourned.
So moved, they don't do that anymore, right?